Good afternoon. I will call this December 3, 2025, meeting of the Shawnee Planning Commission Board. Could I have a roll call, please?
All right, roll call. Commissioner Burrow?
Present.
All right, Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Hayes?
Here.
Barrett?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Alexander. All right, we have a call.
Thank you so much. Item number one, consideration of approval of the minutes from the November 5, 2025, regular meeting. Could I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved and a second. Discussion, additions, deletions. Okay.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Porter?
Yes.
Reese?
Aye.
Barrett?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Burrow?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you so much. Item number two, consideration of appointment of a Shawnee Planning Commission board member to serve as a representative to the Shawnee Downtown Revitalization Project Review Committee. Okay, so... Who's it gonna be?
I mean, I'm happy to...
I could have, let you choose.
So, dear commissioners, before you make a decision, I would like to give you just brief overview. There were several ordinances, resolution signs, in the original revitalization downtown plan. So, over the years, they were updated, and the last one is from 2017. So, 2017 is the last year this committee met, and right now, it is decided that it resumes its functions. So, in the documents that I provided to you, there is the list of each body that needs to supply with participants, and I'll read it outright for the public's sake. Shawnee Planning Commission, Port au Volle County Pioneer Library System, Port au Volle County Health Department, Golden Cooper Technology Center, and Shawnee Public School. So, the meetings are quarterly, and I provided you the last updated plan. The idea is to make decisions and suggestions to the city commission pertaining any activities, developments, improvements in downtown area. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Any questions?
Yes.
The only member from the City of Shawnee would be from the planning commission?
No, Pioneer Library System.
No, I mean, the Action City Commission.
Yeah.
Because you're recommending to city commission?
Yes.
Is that why?
Yeah.
On a commissioner?
That's a recommendation by the city commission. But they want to expand the participant participation, so people from other, I would say, other stakeholders to have a chance to be involved in those projects.
Yeah, I get that. I was just wondering, if there were other boards of commissioners who...
No, this commission is very, very important, and I'm saying this seriously.
Thank you.
So, you need to select one individual. Again, the meetings are quarterly, and at this point, schedule is not finalized for 2026. Time is not finalized. I've been told it will be during the day. So, you know your other engagements, so whoever is selected needs to be able to go for a day meeting. Thank you.
Do you have capacity? Do you want to? Yeah, I mean, I would. Yeah, it makes sense that... So, I'm having boys at the table from downtown.
Okay.
I nominate Amanda Johnson.
I second.
That's right. She means another one.
Thank you very much. So, Amanda will take that position. Thank you so much.
Do you need us to vote on that?
Is that a voting item?
I don't know.
I don't think it is.
I don't think so, because it's not a point of public discussion.
Yeah, it's a recommendation.
Okay. All right, thank you so much, Amanda. All right, item number three, public hearing and consideration of a request to rezone the property at 316 North Kimberly Avenue from R1 Low Density Residential to R3 High Density Residential, case number RZ05-25, applicant Ethan Acock, Acock Properties LLC.
All right. Thank you for that introduction, and welcome to our new planning commissioner. As stated, this is a request to rezone the property addressed as 316 North Kimberly Avenue from R1, which is Low Density Residential, to R3 High Density Residential. This property is located on the west side of North Kimberly Street between East 10th and East 11th, which is just a few blocks west of North Bryan and a few blocks south of Highland, if you're familiar with that area. It's currently zoned R1 for Low Density Residential with similar zoning surrounding it on all sides, north, south, east, and west. The owner and applicant are requesting a rezoning to R3 High Density Residential to develop multifamily housing. The Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map was developed with the comprehensive plan that was created in 2019 and is used to project desired uses based on demographic trends and economic patterns. The Future Land Use Map projects low-density residential, yeah, low-density residential uses in this area. The desired zoning district of three is designed for multifamily uses and to serve as a transition or buffer area between medium-density residential and commercial areas. The desired zoning district encourages multifamily uses and is designed to accommodate a higher intensity use than, say, an R1 district. Let's see. Are there any questions for staff?
Any questions? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing. If you would like to speak for or against this item, please come forward, tell us your name, write down your contact information, and we'd be happy to hear you out. So, I will declare this public hearing open. Would anyone like to speak on this? Going once, going twice, I will declare this public hearing closed, thank you, and ask for a motion.
Do, I guess I probably should have asked this while you, while staff was still up, but do we know their intended use, duplexes, or is it, they're trying to truly fill?
So, looking at the, it just says multifamily.
Yeah, I mean...
There's no... I think if they were going duplexes, they could go R2, because R3...
Well, so, we ran into this last month.
R2 goes to...
One of the reasons to go from R2 to R3 is not for high-density more doors, it's because of the area of land that is required, because there is a maximum number of units per square footage of property.
Per acre.
Per acre, and so, that may be the reason if they're, because these are, I mean, this is a...
This is a small lot.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's a, it's kind of tucked off, tucked off into there, that, you know, that area, so I'm guessing that that's the reason.
It's a very small lot, it's not...
Yeah, I looked at it on the satellite. My guess is it's a square footage issue, the reason they're going to R3 instead of R2. I'm not going to speak to it either way, but that would be my impression based on what we dealt with last month, so...
Could the area even handle more? It's a pretty old area, what about the infrastructure?
There are some new houses not too far away, those ones off of Sequoia.
I'm talking utility infrastructure.
Oh, utility, oh.
I was also suggesting, in terms of traffic, traffic capabilities, parking capabilities, because it's a slow-density area, and it has neighborhood streets.
And R1 allows for duplexes and triplexes.
I will allow for single-family duplexes and I believe triplexes.
Triplex is conditional.
Yes.
R2 is permanent up to a fourplex, and then...
R3 allows for duplexes, triplexes, duplexes, quadplexes, and a purchase.
Well, about the information, we just don't have, we...
I'd like to make a motion that we deny the request.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
All right, one moment. Okay, roll call. Alexander?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Barrett?
Nay.
Okay. Hayes?
Aye.
Johnson?
Thank you very much. Okay.
Wait, what?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm thinking, I'm gonna go nay on this one.
Okay.
I'm so sorry.
All right.
Reel me back in, roll call to us.
The motion is to deny the zoning.
All right, thank you very much. I'm, good Lord, I'm so sorry.
Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Motion passes.
I promise I'm...
Jackie's in a hurry.
Okay, I'm gonna take a deep breath, relax. Okay, so I apologize, are we done?
Yes.
All right, I, thank you so much. All right, item number four, public hearing and consideration of a request to rezone a portion of the property addressed at 3901 North Kickapoo Street from R3 High Density Residential to C2 Regional Commercial, case number RZ06-25, applicant Paul Bass and Landys Engineering.
Thank you. As stated, this is a request to rezone a portion of the property, which is located at the northeast corner of North Kickapoo Street and 39th Street. The property is currently zoned R3 for High Density Residential with similar zoning to the east. That is a current, that's a residential development, I believe it's multifamily. And to the east, the north, and the south is all zoned C2, which is the desired zoning. The map provided shows a faint outline of a few buildings there. Those buildings are no longer there. They were destroyed in the tornado that came through in 2022.
23?
23? A shirt?
Yeah, this one...
Okay, nevermind then. Sorry, my numbers mixed up today.
That's a senior who will attest to that.
Okay. The end goal is to be able to rebuild those buildings and sell them to a commercial business of some sort. The owner and applicant have submitted a preliminary and final replat for this area, which is scheduled for the next regular meeting, which is January. The Future Land Use Map projects high-intensity commercial uses for this area, specifically along the frontage of North Kickapoo Street as a commercial corridor. Are there any questions for staff?
Is this the map that's provided by Landys? Is it gonna be the...
No, they did that for survey, or the current draft of the replat.
But is track one what they're speaking of?
Yeah, track one is what they're proposing to rezone, which is the section of property that is frontage off of Kickapoo.
Yeah, but they're talking about just this part.
Yeah, just how hard this is all the other townhomes.
Yeah, and this has current homes on it, so...
Yeah.
I have questions, but I'm not quite sure. I just feel like I need more information about what's intended and what's, like, is the applicant also going to be building them?
I believe building permits will have to wait until the replat is finished.
Right, but is it their intent to also develop, build the buildings?
Yes, yes, their intent is to put the two buildings back where they were before the tornado, until we build those.
Rebuild them as commercial, as...
Yeah, as commercial, not as residences.
Not as townhouses, okay. And I'm sorry if this is gonna offend anybody, but are there gonna be, are there thought to be more of those soulless strips?
I'm not sure, not from my knowledge. From what I understand, it's meant for one business to occupy a single building, but I don't know if that intent has changed, so...
I think it's saying it's just being a, building it to resell, so they might not even know.
Right.
Trying to see if the applicant is here to see if...
Our experience has been that we've approved rezoning, and then properties get sold, and then different things happen to them than what we thought were gonna be happening to them, so I'm a little...
I mean, that, that's part of it.
Right.
We're approving the zoning, not what's going there.
Right.
I will back up what you're saying, though. Sometimes we've approved stuff that's had some caveats to it, like, like traffic and stormwater flow, and then the things that get, come back to us, don't meet those things either. And so, I agree with what Steve's saying, that it's not as simple as what it seems.
Right, right, and there is always the option to recommend approval with conditions, and of course, whenever they come in for building permits, they're going to have to comply with city standard. But if there were any additional conditions that the planning commission would like to recommend, that's also an option.
I guess we can go to the hearing.
Are there any other questions for staff?
Just to cross this down the road.
Yeah.
Thank you.
One, one thing I would, how much, so every time we buy into R3, and we have other zoning, rezoning, wanting R3 to occur, how much R3 do we have as, in terms of, if you look at our plat, at our zoning?
Citywide.
Citywide, how much R3 do we have?
Gosh, I wouldn't know, not off the top of my head.
I need to look them up.
Yeah.
I cannot tell a percentage on top of my head.
It would be nice to see, maybe some, something that shows, because we, we, we get rezonings to go from R1 to R3, and that creates problems, but then we also get R3 being taken out for various reasons to go to commercial, but then there's always this discussion about how we need multifamily housing. And so, it's, it's a, if we're losing that, it seems to be going against what our needs are.
I would say, if you feel you need additional information, this can be tabled and moved to the next meetings.
Yes, there is always the option to table this for further discussion or information. But the, the current amount of R3 within city limits might, we're currently, they are currently contracted with a consulting group to do a housing study for the city, so they might have that information, but we would have to check with them.
I mean, I think another consideration is, does housing, our commercial corridor make sense?
Well, that's, yeah, that's another consideration, too, especially as we've changed.
In the last 20 years, that Kickin' North of MacArthur has shifted from, I mean, since, since 88, it's been a slow progression from residential to commercial.
You're looking at this map that we were provided, and all of this red is commercial.
Well, as it sits right now, you don't know what portion, it just says a portion.
Well...
Yeah, it's the yellow.
No, it's the, it's the box of where our townhouses sit.
Right, but I'm just saying, it's not in that description there, I mean, only until you get back over to the planning, does it say this one acre tract, so that's what I'm asking.
No, it's this whole, this whole piece is there, just the yellow boxes, the...
That's what we're reading.
If you look at it on an aerial view, there's a, that circle, that horseshoe that's, that's coming from the south there to the, to the, to the east of that, I believe is that right there, and so, it's, it's this cutoff section right here is what it is. That's not... It's outlined with actual prints, if that's what we're talking about, track one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that section is also outlined with yellow in your packets.
I think so.
Okay. So, the remaining four acres would stay R3?
Yes.
And your question of how much?
Because those, those townhouses are still standing.
Right.
Yeah, and they're still housing people, people still live there.
And you know, to the point about it being a business corridor, you know, one of the things we worry about with that is traffic and runoff, you get the same thing with the R3. I mean, it's, you're, you're having the same issues, a lot of people coming into that area trying to use the current infrastructure, so, I mean, the point's well taken. I, I think my request on that, though, is, you know, I would assume that R3 is not a major part of our plan, and so, it would be nice to see what that looks like and how the distribution is across the city. I know those are available to us, but if...
I would say to, even though the survey is still open on the housing study, I would refrain to give percentage, because I'm not sure, but the large majority, housing available are single-family.
Yeah, the, I know that single-family R1 is the majority of the three residential districts, but I don't know by how much.
Yeah, and I think it would be, what's the percentage if you look at commercial in that R3, because they often want to take the same areas, the frontage areas, areas that are currently developed, especially in this town with things being agricultural, agriculture currently and moving over. But I'm, I'm okay going with the hearing, though, as well, I just, I think those were some questions I had, since we haven't been actually through a hearing yet on this.
Are there any other questions for staff?
Any other questions? At this time, thank you. Okay, so, are we going to call for a motion? Are we going to take?
A public hearing.
Public hearing, okay, that's where we arrive this time. Thank you for keeping me in this, in the groove here. Okay, so, at this point, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak for or against this, please come forward, tell us who you are, write down your contact information.
That wasn't helpful.
With no takers, I will close this public hearing, and I will call for a motion.
Make a motion to recommend approval of this item.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Alexander?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Barrett?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Burrow?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Didn't jump the gun back up. Thank you so much. All right, item number five, public hearing and consideration of a request to rezone the property addressed at 1301 East Independence Street from R1 Low Density Residential to C1 Local Commercial, case number RZ07-25, applicant Kenneth and Terry Gober, Aspire Equity Holdings LLC.
Thank you. As stated, this is a request to rezone the property addressed as 1301 East Independence. It's located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Thompson Drive and East Independence Street, which is a few blocks east of North Center Avenue. Property is currently zoned R1 Low Density Residential with similar zoning surrounding it on all sides. Let's see, the owner and applicant are requesting to rezone to C1 Local Commercial to turn the existing building, which was formerly a church, into a virtual video game studio. The Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map recommends low-density residential uses for this area. The desired zoning district, C1, is designed for small-scale neighborhood offices, low-intensity retail, and service businesses, such as restaurants, convenience stores, or to serve as a public space. C1 is designed to be a transition, transitional or buffer district between higher-intensity commercial areas like C2 and other residential areas. Let's see, are there any questions for staff?
Within the C1, it won't restrict what's future in that area, right?
Yeah. C1 has a smaller list of allowed commercial uses than, say, C2. C2 has, is more versatile, so there's, there's a smaller list of uses that are allowed in that zoning district, but the allowed uses would fundamentally shift from residential to commercial.
Well, it's one block from elementary school.
Well, I mean, you're still going to have to, like, it would have to be approved based on the...
Right, but once a building gets in there, my concern is, being that close to elementary future use.
So, so it's an existing building?
Correct, it's a church.
Yeah, I want to buy it for four days a week, so...
C1 is personal services, business support service, financial institution, restaurant, convenience store, retail store, service station, bed and breakfast, I mean, things like a nightclub and stuff like that don't qualify in this zoning.
I mean, if it's in the... And the intended...
Canal of that, just...
And it's a video game?
Mm-hmm. The, from what it was described to me, the intended use is one where you would say, make an appointment to come in and use like the VR headset game or something of that nature.
And you received no feedback from the...
I have not received any objections or things like that.
Okay, maybe today.
Any other questions?
The staff did recommend denial.
Yes, staff has recommended denial due to being considered spot zoning with the lack of similar zoning in the area.
And a church does not require special zoning, right?
The church was pre-existing, the, it's considered legally non-conforming in that it's existed for longer than our current development code.
Okay.
And religious land uses are allowed in a larger variety of zoning districts, so I believe in R3, a church...
It's conditional in R3.
Yeah, I believe it would require a conditional use permit if someone were to, want to establish a new one.
Got it. Thank you.
I have one question, I'm sorry. Would, would this existing business qualify, or would it, would it work under a conditional use permit? Is that one...
The, the desired use is, it's, it's hard to classify with our current development code, but the, the intensity of use and, say, the amount of traffic it's expected to generate would place it somewhere between, like, an office and, like, a hair salon or something like that, which does fall within the purview of C1 zoning, so...
If we condition this under commercial amusement, it's required just a permit.
Okay.
And adopt C one zoning?
Yeah.
So, moving them to C one doesn't even, doesn't resolve the problem, we still have to go to a conditional use permit?
No, no.
But in R one, they could have a conditional use.
If, if we leave it R one, could they then apply for a conditional use permit? Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I don't believe so, no.
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
R one will not allow for this type of use.
Okay, any other questions?
Jack, you said you walked over there all the time? There are multiple buildings just down the street that are empty, would they be better suited for that, that are already commercial?
Just down the street? You mean west?
Yes.
Trying to think of what those are, like...
One is across the street from police station, one is a former church next to it.
They are a small shot, yeah.
I mean, there's several things in the strip center right next to that with open occupancy.
Yeah, that's...
Just saying, I don't, with their denial recommendation, I don't see a positive for putting it there.
Okay, so...
Are there any other questions for staff?
For staff? All right, thank you so much. Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing. If you would like to speak for or against this item, please come forward, tell us who you are, write down your name, and we would be happy to hear what you have to say. Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sammy Etasham, I am the managing member of Aspire Equity Holdings. We were provided authorization on behalf of the current property owner to proceed with the zoning, rezoning on this property. So we've been in communication with the church, obviously the church has struggled to the point now where they need to get rid of the facility. The church is kind of a unique building, it doesn't, it doesn't have a full kitchen, doesn't have full bathrooms, and so it, it really doesn't have a lot of other potential uses under the R one designation, meaning, like, you couldn't just turn it into a home, which was initially my, my thought, but, but that's not really a viable potential option without some significant investment to really redo a lot of the existing, the existing building. And so what we're proposing, and I apologize, Diane, maybe I misunderstood, I, I thought this was being recommended for approval? The rezoning was being recommended by staff for approval, it sounds like it maybe is being denied, the request, is that correct?
Staff makes recommendations, but ultimately, planning commission can make their own deliberation.
Gotcha.
So it's...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And again, the planning commission are recommended by, to city commission, so whatever decision they make, it will be recommended.
The full city commission approves R one.
Understood, understood, for sure. Anyway, I'd be happy to answer questions if anybody had any.
Any plans to improve the parking lot or anything like that?
No immediate plans to improve the parking lot. As, as Diane mentioned, we really don't expect to have a significant amount of traffic, I mean, I would say even less than what the church currently experiences on a regular Sunday or Wednesday evening service. It's going to be appointment-only, very limited amount of space inside, I mean, the facility's not a big, it's not a big building. It's currently listed at about sixteen hundred square feet, so, I mean, you really can't fit that many people inside. Maximum occupancy, according to the listed occupancy inside the building, is a hundred and fifty people. I don't know how you fit a hundred and fifty people in there, I'd be shocked if I ever had more than fifteen or twenty people in there, max, at a given time, just, just based upon the space and the requirements that we have for the facility there, so... Correct, would be.
Okay.
Do you all operate a similar operation somewhere else? We do not, so we live here in Shawnee, we live not far from the, from the property and just wanted something nearby, this, fit the bill. Would be sort of consistent with, I know you guys have a C one designation surrounded by some R one properties just down the road on Independence. I was just looking at where they were actually, Independence and Beer. It's away from Kickoo and Independence, where the main strip of commercial businesses operates. So just a few blocks in the other direction, surrounded by a lot of residential. We approve something similar there, and based on, again, just the, the load of people that we expect to come in and out of there, we didn't think it seemed unreasonable to make the request to rezone for this.
Is there any plan for outside gaming, or is it all inside?
Sorry?
Any outs, is there plans for outside gaming, or is it all inside?
Oh, no, correct, it would all be indoors.
Okay. Is there anything on a, on the C one that ups the level of nuisance noise or anything in a residential area?
I believe the nuisance ordinances are consistent across all zones.
Across all zoning, okay, thank you.
If we pass this and if his business doesn't happen to make it, what's the outcomes, what I'm, you know, wondering?
It stays C one?
It stays C one.
There's no conditioning, fallback.
Is there, is there something particular under the C one zoning designation that commissioners would be concerned about?
Just what ends up in there with a block to the street.
I can tell you some of the uses that are allowed with a permit under C one. Life care, retirement center, cemetery, kennel, veterinary, assembly hall, broadcast or recording studio, business support services, personal services, financial institution, hotel, no, bed and breakfast, art studio, professional office, medical office, restaurant, food preparation and sales, convenience store, retail store, this is all allowed with a permit under C one.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Medical marijuana, life, personal...
Medical marijuana is allowed?
No, I'm sorry, no, 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 that's C two, my mistake, my mistake.
I was going to say, I'd be willing to commit to you guys that I would never sell to someone that would operate, and I'd put a deed restriction if that would make the commissioners happy, like, that doesn't line up with my moral convictions as well, so...
Childcare center, part-time childcare program, government services, library, postal service, safety service.
So, all right, do you think else, sir? Any other questions?
Let's see other questions.
All right.
I have a question for you.
Okay, all right, so, okay.
My name is Steven Lewis.
Come in, come in, write your name and number.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
I live across the street, and my question is, is if it's by appointment only, how often are appointments?
It'd potentially be available twenty-four hours a day.
Twenty-four hours a day?
Yeah, so think, when I talk about a simu, I think of a golf simulator specifically. So, it's just whatever availability, people have to come in there and use the very limited amount of bays that would be available there, which, again, because of the space is not going to be enough. They can two to three, maybe tops, is about all I can fit in there. Be more like, almost like driving range practice, simulate golf course, I mean, it's a bay with a projector that they hit into a screen, so, I mean, you're not talking about significant noise either, I mean, it's not like they're hitting a wall or beating on something. If the screen falls on the ground, goes back to them.
So, are you doing golf simulation or VR, or what's your target audience?
Yeah, correct, so, we were vague in the application, but it definitely would be a golf simulator.
So you're going to be open twenty-four hours?
Yeah, appointment only, yeah.
Now, my other thing is traffic, traffic there backs up every day for the school, first thing in the morning, later in the evening, I have a hard time, I back a trailer into my driveway, I already have a hard time going through, so with the traffic being there, and you're bringing in more people, what, what's that going to do for our traffic? And we're a pretty quiet neighborhood, so you got to get young kids coming to learn to go golf and come out, and they're sitting in the cars making a lot of relief, you know, ten, eleven o'clock at night? You know, that's where, you, you bring, you bring that in, and then we have instances where now the police alley is involved in that area, and other things going on, it's like, that would just, it seems like a headache to me for that to come into a quiet residential neighborhood. I just wanted to speak my piece and...
Yeah, I mean, the alternative is you have a, a building that really doesn't have any permitted, permitted uses as it's currently, as it currently sits, and it's going to just remain abandoned, and, I mean, that, in my experience, abandoned buildings that don't have any use tend to limit themselves to far more nefarious activities as opposed to something like what I'm suggesting today.
I mean, it, it's still a church, correct?
It is currently a church.
It's still currently a church, and they recently, how long ago did they buy it as a church? Didn't it recently turn over in the past two years?
Two years.
Two years ago? So who's saying another church won't come in and still use that building?
Yeah, it's, it's possible.
Yeah, I mean...
Certainly past experiences of...
And then if you sell, again, that's another thing, so what, what else comes in?
Well, okay, I'm gonna, let's, let's, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir, come ahead. If you would, tell us who you are, write your name and number down, please.
My name is Jeff Eaton, and I live directly across the street, and I know Sammy, I go to church with Sammy, but my concern is, if, similar to his, the late hours of it, and if his business fails, I don't really want a smoke shop across the street from my house, too close to the school, and little kids up and down that street every day, and that's my big concern, is what happens if his fails, if it can then be open to anything and everything to go in there? So I agree, if you'll let him do this, something needs to be put in place that would prohibit that kind of shop going in there. That would be questionable for kids to be roaming in front of it every day, walking to and from school.
Is a smoke shop in C one?
No, she said it's in C two.
Yeah, then that's not an issue, so...
Was on an issue?
Yeah, so that's not, that's not...
Not for a smoke shop, but future use, that would be something different.
Well, you got this other convenience store, because you already have one.
So I can read it again, because it's kind of a loopless, so, either cemetery, kennel, veterinary, assembly hall, broadcast, recording studio, business support services, personal services, financial institution, bed and breakfast, art studio, professional office, medical office, restaurant, food preparation and sales, convenience store, retail store, service station, craft manufacturing, childcare center, party, childcare center, government services, library, museum, cultural exhibits, postal services, safety services, wireless communication facility, building for tower mounted antennas, civic club or launch, community center, health club, parking rack, community garden, and that's it.
Well, that was all I had, it's just that, I just worry about what we're going next, because the noise would be the other thing for me, because we live on that street, directly right across the street, and we don't like the noise after ten o'clock, so, you know, that kind of thing. But I do believe in Sam, I, probably a good idea if we could just limit the hours.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, I'm Crystal Walk, apparently these are my neighbors. We, I live...
Write your contact information down.
Okay. I live almost directly across from the school, I'm, the crosswalk goes into my front yard. And my concern is, I, I don't have children at the school anymore, my kids are grown, but I see all the neighborhood children cross the street and walk down that side of the street. The traffic is backed up for blocks and blocks and blocks at the beginning and the end of the school day, and that's a lot of children, so I'm concerned about the additional traffic and noise, but just mostly the traffic. I've lived, I, I've owned that home for over thirty years, and lived there for most of the time. And I've seen the change of the, the lanes to going from a middle-term lane to having two lanes on the school side, which is the same side as the church, to accommodate all that extra traffic that we have now. So that's my main concern, is the children and the traffic.
Thank you very much.
But I probably would come to the same, someplace else, that would sound like fun.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm Jessica Jonas, I live across the street as well. Obviously, yes, I'm concerned of a business like this going in across the street, especially the simulations, I've gone to them myself, I have children as well, and we find that fun. But also, those places serve alcohol, so I do not know if the C one at O'Connor, they have the sports simulations up there, and they have a bar that you can serve and drink from while you're doing those sports simulations. So that would be a concern, too, is if this becomes a gaming where there are teenagers or young adults gathering at eleven o'clock at night, and they've had a few drinks while they're hitting a few rounds of golf, and then they're coming out and leaving, it's, I'm asleep, it will be noisy, I'm right across from it. So, obviously, no, I do not want this to be approved.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? I'm, I apologize, would anyone else like to speak in favor of this item? In favor of it? Please come forward, sir.
But I have the best interest, I've earned my own property.
Yes, sir? Tell us your name, I'm sorry.
I'm Keith Gober, it's like where I was sponsored.
Write in the margin, you can write in the margin, sir, because your, your name and phone number would be just fine.
We just had a contact signed with the contingency, and the only stipulation thing I knew about the usage of the property, the proposed usage, was what was on the, the posting, is what, just like the neighbors do. And I didn't know what a gaming studio was, you know, the word, the gaming studio is. I do know that, you know, the building has been there for, as long as I've been around Shawnee, and I was born here, and I'm seventy years old, so it's quite a, quite an old building, you know, but still a well cared-for building. You either go by and know that this was a former church across building for years and years. We purchased it a couple of years ago with the intent of a Bible study, and then that developed into a small group for a period of time that would worship on Sunday morning, but primarily a Bible study. And situations have changed in our, in our situation, and not as many are coming, and we thought it would be better usage some other way for, you know, that, well, now I've heard about the businesses, varying places down by the school, and there is a CPA office there, just across the street from school, if you're aware of, and three blocks to the west, just a quick stop, and then there's the medical marijuana just real close by, and the high-rise, and, and then down the multiple housing down by the schoolway school, and so it's already got a lot of traffic. My view of it is, it's got to be used for something, and it's certainly not something that I think a house is going to be built there, so, very nice piece of property, and there's very little entertainment opportunities for the young people. I can see those, they were running correctly, and there were several verified that he's a stand-up type of a guy, that it might be something to be used to the young people there, and I was kind of concerned myself, and wondering why it'd be a twenty-four hour deal, you know? And then your concerns of further use, should this, should this not work out, you know, all those things are reasonable. But my question is, what are you going to do with it? What are you going to do with it, is it going to sit there as an empty lot and bulldoze it down, am I going to care for it for the next twenty years or whatever, till I'm out of the picture? And I assume that's what the planning commission's for, make a plan, and what, what, what would you recommend if you were in my shoes? Or in someone else's, it's an easily converted building, it's got two bathrooms, and it's an alcohol bathroom, what you'd expect in a worship place that's been there for years. A Baptist tree in front and so forth, and I'm sure he's going to remodel for usage like he wants. It would seem that, to me, reasonable that it would be some kind of contingency along those lines to satisfy the concerns of the neighborhood and also to, to give the... to satisfy the concerns of the neighborhood, and also to, to give the opportunity for something being unique. As one neighbor said, I'd like to go into it too. I've never done anything like that myself. Maybe I don't wanna get in point, and you may as well, but some reasonable place to re-own that. And if you could even put some kind of contingency, should, whether it could go back to R1 or whatever you want. Yes, you could do that and things, but my point is, is have a contract on the property with this gentleman and his company. I have not met him, and I've talked, I've talked to my realtor, and it's contingent upon approval of change to C1, the sale is. If it doesn't do that, I'm sure I'm open to some recommendations by neighbors and others, what we should do with that property. So, that's, that's what I have, I'm advocating for, of course.
How long have you owned the building?
Yeah, sorry.
How long have you owned?
A couple of years. I don't have the exact date, and I should have if I was gonna speak, but that's, that's a good guess on that particular property.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else? All right, I will close the public hearing. And we're pointing to this board for our opinions. Right? All right, so across the street is a derelict nursing home.
Nursing home, yeah.
That's closed. The former dance studio, now CPA office.
Is it, is it nursing home that one has all those buildings behind it on the east side?
No, that's like residential.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that, they were once 25 years, I think, part of the same thing, but.
Right.
I would really hate to see another building fall by the wayside in this town. For, for whatever reasons, worship space is not being rapidly occupied these days. Church families are not growing in all places. So, the likelihood of a, of a thriving church community going back into, admittedly, a very, very small building are somewhat unlikely. What is more likely to happen is that he'll, is that Mr. Gober will do his best to maintain it, and it'll sit there empty. So, and also, C1 is limited. I mean, it's very limited.
Can we limit the hours on it, to address their concerns?
That's not our, that's not our business.
That's why.
But we, we as a city have an ordinance that is.
There are nuisance ordinances everywhere.
The various people would need to come to when they.
They call police?
Yeah, and, and, and there, I mean, things happen, it really does. And I mean, the thing is, is that central disposal can't create a nuisance with traffic, noise, or anything else. So, it's, I mean, there's no special area. As far as R1, it's concerning, I mean, Independence is one of the busiest streets in town. So, if you can hear somebody in a golf simulator or the traffic that runs up and down Independence Street at all hours of the night, because I live two blocks away, so I'm, I'm very familiar with it, when it goes in. I'll walk by there about four days a week. So, I mean, if, if, if for a limited commercial use, I don't see any reasonable other, I don't see any reasonable use for these. I mean, what are we gonna do with these buildings? We're faced with the exact same thing downtown. Nobody wants, nobody wants this or that. So, then the building rots and then falls down, and then there's adverse possession, and you bulldoze, and then the county owns it.
Well, in the district of concern, in C1, we're not allowing nightclubs or.
There's no alcohol allowed.
Right, okay, that's what one of them said.
I mean, O'Connor's a billion-dollar development.
Alcohol sales is different than zoning.
And alcohol sales is a community benefit, so.
There's a distance between facilities like.
And I love to.
One district, yes, right, yeah.
He, he should be saying, no, there's not any alcohol. So, I mean, my, my, my personal thing is, is we need to, we are the ones to take action to, whether or not it's spot zoning, I realize that's not a great thing. But you think about, and as far as the concerns of the public, I, you know, I live in the, I live just outside that neighborhood. I'm not immune to that. But the thing is, is that there's C1 all around that place. There's C1 up and down that street. And, you know, so, you know, that's, that's my neighborhood too, so I would, I would, I would take note. So, if anyone else doesn't have anything, are we ready to call for a motion?
Make a motion to recommend approval of C1 for this item.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We show no vote. Alexander?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Reese?
Nay.
Barrett?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Earl?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for being here. It means a lot for you all to use us. I mean, we've sat here by ourselves many times, so thank you so much for being here. Thank you very much. And remember that this is also considered by the full city commission, so at the next, at the next meeting.
And they have a hearing there where people can come and express their concerns.
And there is, oh, there is a public hearing in that as well. So, I highly encourage you to get involved in, in that process.
I don't hear will.
I'm sorry, sir.
I don't hear will.
I, I'm sorry. This issue will be revisited by the full city commission.
Okay, that's what I.
And there is a public hearing there for anyone that would like to say something.
The motion was to approve the item.
And the motion was to approve, and it did pass.
Okay, that's what I was.
Yes, sir. But, and like I said, that, this, this item will go before the full city commission at the next meeting. And that's where it gets final approval, yes, ma'am.
Do we have a date for the next meeting?
December 15th.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, I think we're on to item number six, Community Development Department Updates.
Dear Commissioners, I have just one update for you. We realize that walking audits bring a wealth of information and are very eye-opening for different projects that the city is done. For example, we're currently doing them for Safe Streets For All, and we're collecting all kind of information in terms of safety, lightening, desirability, and other categories. So, we realize as a community development department that we would like to make this a practice with priority areas, of course, school areas are the high priorities, because there is a lot of people that walk around schools. So, so far, we've done two walk audits around Jefferson School and the high school, and we'll continue on. So, we're planning to develop a schedule, one walk audit per month, starting 2026. And because it's hard to predict the weather, for example, we arranged walk audit for this past Monday, six weeks in advance. And we didn't know it will be that cold, it will be that icy, so we couldn't reschedule. So, we realized maybe we can pinpoint the week, and based of, we're coming closer, we can select a date where we can do the walk audits. But we'll, I'll start personally sending invitations, and I would like some of you to participate. We'll invite other stakeholders. We'll invite city commissioners. I hope at one point, maybe city management can be involved. But this is very eye-opening, because driving around, it's not the same like walking the area. For example, Monday walk audit, there is a sidewalk, and driving by say, oh, yeah, there is a sidewalk, sidewalk, people can walk. Oh, no, there were tracks parked over the sidewalk. And until I personally walk over there, said, so I need to go on the steep slope, close to the street, walking on the grass to surround these trucks, because they park over. So, this is just one example. But I would like to encourage you to start participating and respond to the invitations for the walk audits, because, again, school, school areas, school zones are top priority for us. And the results from this walk audits, of course, produce projects, improvements in areas that otherwise it may stay overlooked. Because people say, yeah, there is a sidewalk, people can walk, until sidewalks stop at nowhere, there is a grass, and a few hundred yards later, the sidewalk continue. Or maybe there is not enough lighting, stuff like that, so. Any questions for me?
I would just add too, that the, having that data opens up funding opportunities for our community too.
Absolutely, yeah. Once we collect the data, we have, we may produce strong applications for alternative fundings for the city.
Alternative funding to pour sidewalks and make our neighborhoods nicer?
Not just sidewalks, but for example, lightening improvements, or maybe places to park. For example, Jefferson Park is a beautiful park in the middle of a neighborhood. And being called out there, you just wonder, okay, where to park, how to walk, it's really very confusing. There is a roundabout approaching high school that people weren't sure how to use. There was no signage, maybe signage, maybe flashing white reflectors, because some walk audits are purposely done and leaving when it's getting dark, because it gives total different perspective. So, it's not just sidewalks. Maybe a skate improvement, stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Item number seven, Commissioner's comments.
I want to mention the Gingerbread Village. If you haven't been out there, it's at OBU. This is the third year, I believe, Habitat for Humanity's done it. It's a fundraiser for their organization. But it's a free event. You can just drive through the oval at OBU and check out all the houses, and hopefully it keeps growing every year. I know there's other events happening in Shawnee too for the holidays, so I'm happy to see that. People are staying local and doing things local. I appreciate small businesses coming with ideas to stay in our community and, you know, fill buildings that need to be filled. So, that's all I got.
Two things, the Shawnee, the Shawnee Mission and the Salvation Army both, because of funding lapses have, are not being, one, one thing is they, they need funding for various things like, like providing housing support, but the Salvation Army. But I think even more immediate need that, that people in the community can provide. If you look at their, their monthly calendars, they're filling about half of the slots for meals right now. And it used to be that things were completely full. Now, why that's happened, I think a lot of it has to do with the cost of goods, but there's, if you know anybody that's looking for an opportunity to serve, both of those organizations are, are good places to do that. The other thing I wanted to mention is, we are nearing the winter season, where it is gonna get really, really cold, not just during the evening, but during the day as well. And there'll be several warming centers opened. If you, if you want to help support something as well, that's something to support. Keep your eye out on places like Facebook or Instagram. Those will be, be advertised at that point. And also, there are several clothing places around, around the city. The Wesley United Methodist Church, I think you guys have one.
Fiscal church.
Fiscal church.
I'll have a close call.
The Mission does as well. C3 Church has one. You guys, I think, have a clothing somewhat of one down.
Not enough to, not remarkable.
Keep in mind that it's not just clothes, but coats and blankets right now, and, and scarves and hats, and gloves and things like that are needed, and oftentimes, that's the one thing that's missing the most. So, I just wanted to put that out there. If you know somebody who wants to volunteer, people need volunteers.
I'm good. I had my little soapbox earlier, so. Again, I would like to thank all of you for being here and participating. Thank you very much. We, it means a lot, and it's, it's, it's a, it's a legal requirement, but we're happy to have you here, and thank you again.
I was just gonna add on to what Travis mentioned. There's a lot of stuff going on downtown over the next few weeks. The Winter Wonderland over at the Depot. Shawnee Outlook has like a bingo-type thing they're doing for downtown businesses on December the 13th, and then the Christmas parade on the 12th, so a lot of opportunities to do things right here downtown.
I just want to say thank you for having me in.
Welcome, sir, welcome.
Thank you.
Do we have a choice? I was kidding.
I understand why.
It's the only manufactured outrage I have. Nobody has a choice of any of us. Okay, anyone else? Thank you so much, ladies. Thank you, and thank you all. Thank you, folks.